...
Jim.
Here.
Uh, Patrick.
Here.
Aunt Jo.
Here.
Aunt Debbie.
Here.
And Lisa.
Here.
And myself.
Okay, visitors' comments. Grant. Rick?
I attended the SORID meeting last night myself and actually the new supervisor guy we sat in. And just like I mentioned to them, I hope we can get both boards to work together. I know there's been a lot of issues, a lot of didn't vet us. I mean, we're all here for the same reason, the community, so I just hope to board both boards. And that's all I have.
We've done our part every time.
That's what I'm saying, I mean...
We've never refused anything, we've always gone through the...
Yeah, but like I said, it's just...
It's function ridiculous.
Yes, it's a lot of nitpicking and stuff going on, but we gotta work together. I mean, everybody, all three authorities. That's all I have, thank you.
And I'd like to, uh, I'd like to involve the supervisors a lot of that too. That way there's no hearsay about, oh, this person said this.
See, that's when I told Guy, yesterday I talked to him, he said, "Come to the meetings, hear what the board says, not what you hear on the street." I mean, I might hear something from...
I totally agree, I hope to see the new supervisor here tonight.
I actually would be, I told him last night, I said, "Guy, you coming down at five? There's a water one if you can make it."
Thank you.
Which I got another thing to go to Curzey, so...
Yep.
Thanks a lot, work together, see you soon.
Watch your roads.
Ladies and gentlemen, back there?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm here, well, first of all, can I ask the board a question?
Can you...
Is there any ac- I'm sorry?
Can you please give your name so I know who you are?
Okay, my name's Bob Schwadenmeyer.
Okay.
And I attended the meeting of, the last board meeting of the water company. Been hearing some rumors, if you will, of, uh... Possibilities of, uh, Patrick being drummed out by the usual J Township political means. Is there any accuracy to this from the board? Does anybody know of this?
There's been a lot of stuff going on over the last six months or so that I'm not very happy with. And I feel the board feels the same way. And we just, we need to move to the next step at this point. So, I really don't have any more that I can discuss about it, but I have.
Okay, well, if there's even a grain of truth about it, I think it'd be, I hope the board sides with me on this. You got, you got a really good operator right now here. Born and raised. To even think about getting rid of him is just completely, completely out of touch. I wish I could use the language I'm able to use, but, uh...
Yeah, I think we all would like, but, you know, the thing about it, we need more people and we all gotta go to the township meeting, you know, and lay it on the line. Because at that next meeting, you know, just like Joe, Joe's been a, been a good board member, does good, you know, and we would like to keep him, but they want to put in whoever they want to.
Did they acknowledge, I've heard through the brokers that the board sent a letter to the township saying they were happy with the board they had now. Did they acknowledge that? Did they take that into consideration?
I wasn't at that meeting, did they have it?
It was in front of them, they saw it, but they still brought up another person's name.
Yeah.
And it wasn't the supervisor that just left.
Well, at some point this...
So, we did talk about it, we voiced our opinions, and then the state, the motion was...
The motion was made to put the guy on, the motion was seconded. Um, I appreciate everybody that was there, um, they spoke, I spoke up, um, and convinced the supervisors to table it until the next meeting.
And they did?
They did.
Well, it's because of one vote, and that vote was ready to cast.
Yeah.
It's a true...
It's worse than Washington DC for us.
So, next meeting, it could still happen, so...
It's positive, it's still, you know...
Anybody that could be there.
Wouldn't it be inappropriate, I mean, because we're his parents, is it okay? I mean, if we come and speak with him as...
Absolutely, bring more people, everybody, everybody that knows him and, you know...
Do you take taxes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's important for every single member of this board to attend that...
And that next township meeting, that'll be on a Thursday night, so...
It's February the 20th.
Yeah, Sunday night.
Don't be afraid, just speak up, Ben, you, okay? If you care, Bob.
I do?
I'd want to attend that meeting. All of you people have the letter that was given to the supervisors by the person that was in one of the motions?
Complaint letter of October.
Because all of you should read that.
What letter was that?
That was the applicant's October letter.
The other name that was brought up and that they decided to table. He wrote about a month or two a long letter to the supervisors about his...
Yeah.
About his work, and you all, if all of you don't have that, you should get it.
Is that from this, that was written to the supervisors?
Yeah, you would have it here.
I don't have it here, I'm not...
Oh, I'm thinking, I'm thinking you're the secretary.
No, I don't have it.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
I don't think we've ever got a copy of any of that.
I heard that that same letter was handed out at the terrace?
Oh, that one.
By his attorney?
Yep.
Is that true?
I believe it was, yeah.
I don't know.
That's true.
What do you, to the residents or the terrace?
To just people that were there.
Yeah, they just handed out randomly, yeah.
So, how can the office board have read that letter?
I have a copy, I think he sent it to us.
Well, I thought, yeah, we read it at the time.
Is that just me, we got, I got one he handed out the meeting, is that the night, the end of the meeting, or not that word?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's...
October 4th.
Yeah. Yeah, and we knew it.
I think it's worthwhile for the board also to have the letter that recommended to the supervisors that the water glory should be sold.
Well, that's the convo for the subject letter you're discussing.
Yeah.
Well, since we're talking about this, you know, uh... The individual stated at the last supervisors' meeting, uh, these may not be exact words, but he wanted to work for the community in the best interest of the communities. Now, in that covering letter we're discussing, I have a quote, probably what he said. "Perhaps it would better serve our community to remove the water authority from local politics and sell it to a water company such as Aquor Pennsylvania, that has a larger revenue base that may in turn be more economical for the residents of our community and/or will at least be more dependable and efficient." So, to me, to me, that's a red flag.
One side of opinion there, huh? That was also a statement made at one of the supervisors' meetings by one of the supervisors, who said they'd been on the phone regularly with Aquor, so...
A supervisor, was it?
Yes, yes. I believe it was the one that got in trouble with some other misconduct or something.
It was Jeremy Rippey.
Don't be bashful, let's handle the problem.
They call it misconduct.
Well, wouldn't anybody feel that if the Valley Water Authority was sold to any private individual, all of our rates would go up?
Okay.
Undoubtedly.
Really?
Undoubtedly.
That should not be used as political leverage.
Exactly right, for political leverage.
I mean, it's up to this board to make the decision whether it makes economic sense.
No difference.
But as far as using it for political leverage...
What, what, what the problem is here is that certain supervisor has the SORID, he has all his workers at the township like a little puppet on a string, but he don't have us on the little puppet on the string. And that's, that's the whole reason this is all happening and going down, so... But like I said, it's, it's just time to move to the next step and, uh...
They can't stand to see the unified board that works together very well.
Yeah, because it's just like Rick was saying, you know, we don't work together or whatever, I mean, we've done everything in our power to meet with them, to meet with the SORID, to, you know, to iron things out, but no way.
We did that just in the way that we come to meetings.
Yeah, they won't show up, you're always battling with Chester and Ricky Fire, and Jeremy Rippey don't show up, you know?
He was invited with the supervisors, he just didn't show up.
Firstly, I think it all hinges on Guy Alagretto.
Yep, I agree.
Uh, I believe he said at the meeting that he had a copy of the letter that we were talking about earlier, but I don't know how much he knows about what's been going on.
Who, Guy?
Guy.
Absolutely zero.
But he knows their half of the story.
Guy Alagretto hasn't been out of the house for 30 years. For 30 years he hasn't been out of the, hold on a second, hasn't been out of the house for 30 years, hasn't come out one time, goes to work over a set marriage, comes back, and guess what? He's 62, he wants out of working. Guess what? I can get on the township and have free healthcare for six years. Six years, have free healthcare. Since Jeremy Rippey's been on this township, Keith, how many roads and ditches and anything has ever been fixed? Fixed, right. I'm not talking, only grab, drop the granded blade and try to clean the ditch out. There ain't a road, dirt road in this whole township that's been touched in years, and I'll take you to every single one of them. You know, but yet, they need to hire some backup guys to, to work on the township because the guys they have, you know, that do nothing, they, they, they can't, you know, in case they want to take a day off and doing nothing, so they have somebody backup, you gotta pay for that too now. So, it's just a crock, not to interrupt you, but carry on.
Rick made the motion for you, Joe, but no one would second it. And then came the next motion for this other person.
The next applicant.
And then all the people that came to meetings started asking questions and things. So, and then I think Guy, he didn't really know what was going on.
Yeah, he will, he'd come here though, he won't come, you won't see him.
He needs to do his homework for the next supervisors' meeting.
He ain't doing nothing.
Cause I think this is all gonna hinge on him.
If I asked him at the meeting to come and talk to me.
Fill in the blanks, but we, we had a certain person that leaned on Guy's shoulder with another letter that was sent just to the three supervisors. Nobody else seen the letter except the three supervisors. And that helped make him swing that letter.
Which letter was that, Joe? If it's in the supervisors', it's on the public record, I'm not asking for it.
It's from, well, you'd have to get ahold of that secretary, but it's from that Bostonian person, I believe.
Linda Quinn.
Okay.
Okay, well, I've got her letter.
Bostonian.
Let's not dance around here, let's have the facts.
Yes, thank you.
One question, if I could.
I, I do have Linda Quinn's letter.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
And I, I think, I...
Could you read it out loud for us, Paul?
I'm not gonna read it, I'll take it.
Well, no, I suppose not.
I have one question, if I could.
Go ahead, Josh.
I was at the SORID meeting, not last night, but the month before, and they said they had made an agreement with you guys for the agreement for the reading of the meters, that they were gonna pay $3 or something.
No.
That's not true?
No, it's not.
That's all I want to verify, they said they were gonna get it for just, you were gonna send her in the paper and they were gonna do it. That's what they said.
They're getting the paper copy, and they're gonna scan that.
Well, no, I'm just asking, they said they had an agreement.
No, there's another question, not to take away from Joe, I wasn't at the meeting, I apologize. Joe was an applicant, Mr. Snyder was an applicant, I've been told there was other applicants.
I was an applicant, yes.
Never heard their name.
They weren't even recognized.
No way.
Acknowledged that they got an application. It's a real joke.
They were after the, the people asked for their names, and the other applicants were Fran Gusterson and Jim Antonio. There were four applicants. No, they did not offer to give them to us until we asked.
And Jim Antonio is my husband, and he was told he would never be appointed to this board.
By whom?
Supervisor.
Park and Lot Deal.
Everybody's becoming a township supervisor, it's wrong.
Wrong.
And everybody's electing, I, I can't believe that they found enough idiots to vote Guy Alagretto, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, we need Guy, we need Guy Alagretto.
I don't, I don't know.
Need him on his own, how you gonna do it?
I don't know.
He's already owned by Rippey. Back to the puppet on the string.
I think a lot of people voted because of his last name.
Yeah, boy, you hit the nail on the head, bro.
Hopefully, hopefully, he approaches us, hears our side, and...
He approached nothing.
Yeah, that's why he should have been with us, I said, "I'm glad you're not here."
He'll never come, you'll never see him, and if he does, he'll just cause trouble, so...
I've been told there's people trying to call him, he won't answer the phone.
He got what he wanted, he gets, he gets his free healthcare and he gives his, how much? $23 bucks every month. Doing absolutely not.
Bob, why don't they continue?
And what can he do, Keith? Zero. He don't even know how to use a shovel. He won't be put on snow, he won't be doing nothing. So, anyway, you're, were you the minister?
I just wanted to back it up a little and ask the board about, what's the source of the animosity toward the operator? It can't be performance, uh, what is it?
One of our employees quit. And it was an employee that one of the supervisors, as far as I'm concerned, he's the one that kinda created his job, wasn't he? I mean, he's the one that hired him, you know?
Basically, we had...
I didn't tell the story, do you want to tell it?
I guess in a nutshell, I'll say my part if you want to, you can. In a nutshell, I worked great with the man for years. I was asked by former chairperson Linda Quinn to draft job descriptions. I presented the draft, the draft to the board. The employees got a copy, the employees cornered me and told me they didn't like it.
Before the board?
So, before the board had the copy, um, so, I presented to the board, I presented my concerns to the board, hey, they don't like this, it's, I've gotten a lot of flack, I would like the document to be destroyed, which it has not been destroyed by everyone that was asked, everybody here has destroyed it, um, cause it has come up since. Because I wanted the animosity to stop, I wanted everything to continue. If they didn't like it, we'll start over. Well, things didn't get any better from that point forward.
I'll verify with, I'll verify with Patrick, Linda Quinn did ask him to do those job descriptions, and I was trying to help him, and he, she was mad because we didn't get them done when she wanted them done.
And I, and I will say, I asked them for help, where was their input?
They didn't.
If anybody wants to add anything.
Yeah, the one person that caused a lot of this trouble and issues, uh, decided he would retire or just plain quit, and, uh...
They both retired.
That person, yeah, that person and persons, must be...
Yeah, and they can.
Floral. Uh, they went through the office in a water type, Watergate type situation, where they stole documents and, uh, who knows what else.
Well, and just like...
Someone hasn't come out yet.
You know, we, we all got together, we meet with the SORID and stuff, you know, we, we got together, come to their meetings and stuff, we wanted to meet with the two workers, we just want to say, hey, what's going on, you know, I wanna hunter out some things, you know? Tried everything, and then that's when they quit.
On the letter that you have, Bob, that's where it refers that I was trying to get meetings, that was the meeting, to try to get the employees to come together and to stop it, the problems. But Linda would not back us, she said if she had a meeting, then we'd quit. And that's the honest truth.
Yes, it is.
And the month before they quit, I'd like to say, we held an executive session to
discuss employee matters. She opposed it, I said, "Well, I'm still making the motion to have an executive session to discuss employee matters," the motion carried. And in that executive session, I said, "We need to get the group together and discuss this before it's too late." Never happened, and look what happened.
This same person is looking for a job at the sewage treatment.
I've heard that.
That's the overall plan, in my opinion.
By the...
Now, I am not the smartest person in the valley.
I'm with you.
But I feel that Stacy Snyder was instructed to, to get his sewage license. He's in the process of that right now.
I'm gonna take care of it.
Chet Lundie and Richie Fire is gonna screw that poor kid, I don't know what his name is, who works for the township, who's been promised full-time with benefits. Stacy Snyder's gonna get hired, the township is gonna merge these two boards, and Stacy Snyder's gonna be his boss. My opinion.
I don't know how Stacy, who quit the water authority without even a two-week notice, could turn around now and be nominated to sit on the board.
Yeah, it's just, it's...
It's like, to me, it's...
It's all nonsense.
I mean, that's the proof right there, that it's, that it's just being something that's...
It's like the good old boys, love they fought. Just like down in South Alabama.
I was in a similar situation, one of the members, when they were talking about looking for someone, heard that Stacy had quit the...
Gave him a job.
Water, I thought she said. Oh, yeah, she, he wants to work here.
Oh, but I...
I sent, um, this letter to Stacy's because I didn't believe he had clues on what was going on, and I thought, "Oh, my Lord, you don't put a higher..."
Well, I, I mean, the defense of Denise's mother is, he's, he's probably had four or five jobs since he's been at school, and everybody he's worked with, people have come up to me and said, "What a good worker." I never heard one complaint, I, I've only ever heard that he has made friends with people and worked with, and then all of a sudden, he starts working for this water.
It's a bad, yeah.
It's not the water authority, though, Denise.
Exactly, exactly, we know that, we know that.
Because we have, we, we have rallied behind him because we know what's going on behind the scenes. And Jeremy Rippey and Jim Huff and Stacy Snyder and Linda Quinn and Fran Gusterson and Jack McCluskey are the characters involved. And Jeremy Rippey himself, out of his mouth said that this, that was Jack McCluskey's baby, and he is determined that that will make him fail. That came from the supervisor.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
And if, and if, I knew what happened in August, the day, the first time Jeremy Rippey came to the plant and called him everything, but, I don't know. And that's why I went to the plant the second time, because he was out to do the same thing to him.
That was so unprofessional of you.
And then they lie. They lie.
You tell me the story.
Yeah, definitely the two places.
Frankly.
Put a water line under a water line or on top of a water line.
I listened to the whole thing.
That was another thing.
You want to report back to your company manager?
I'll go check, don't worry.
You asked, you asked another, like, what happened, there was another incident on Apple Street, we were putting in a new water line, um, to re, to reconnect on this side of the street.
That was like during the summer, right?
Yeah.
Before all the, anything started out?
The summer previous. I, uh, we were running a new water line to connect to the other side to the two-inch. Where that two-inch was, we were running the six-inch down and up the street. I was there, the guys started doing the work, and they started installing the six-inch line on top of the two-inch that we were abandoning. The six-inch line was only gonna be two, two feet down. I said, "That's close to Frost Barrier, but not quite, we need to get deeper. That two-inch is coming out, take that two-inch out first." I was called every name in the book, I didn't know what I was talking about, so that was one of the few days I pulled rank. I pulled my license out of my wallet and said, "This gives me permission to tell you where to put that line."
And this is talking to Snyder and Huff both?
Yeah, so, that day, Jim Huff looked out on me and left. The next morning, we went to go and start to work again, and I was met on site by Jeremy Rippey. And I said, "I'm not discussing this, I'm going back to the plant, I didn't want the conflict." Swore at me and said, "You turn your, you know what around, we're talking about this." So, I gave him the same spiel. "We're removing this two-inch line, why would we put the new line on top of it?" "Well, don't you think Jim's had more experience than you and knows more than you?" I said, "Yes."
"Just too lazy to do it."
Jim's, though, Jim does have more experience than me, does know more than me, but this time, I don't agree with him, that's not the way we're gonna do it. So, around that point was the turning point with Jeremy, that he started acting a professional with me, and, uh, there was another instance...
What was, why were they reluctant to take the...
Because they wanted to do it their way, not my way.
Well, because it would have required a little bit more work.
I'll give Stacy credit.
Probably maybe dig around the ground.
I'll give Stacy credit that day, Stacy stayed out of it, that was between me and Jim Huff.
Physical labor, huh? Imagine, physical labor. Try to get one of them, one of them towns to do some physical labor.
And there was another instance, uh, the guys wanted me to ask about purchasing a piece of equipment, I went to the Weibo Hotel and asked about it, uh, Jeremy didn't see eye to eye with me, um, got livid with me and kicked me out and told me I shouldn't be, kicked me out and told me I shouldn't be there on company time getting paid. And I said, "Jeremy, I'm not trying to fight," and his wife said, "Patrick, just go." And she was just trying to confuse the situation there, but...
Yeah, but he was your buddy when he wanted to hire you, right?
But I was just gonna say, that was what I was going to say.
At that, at that point, um, was the turning point, because I think at that point, Jeremy couldn't, he realized he couldn't sway me to make all the decisions he wanted. As far as I'm concerned, I'm the operator, there's certain things I'm inevitably irresponsible for, whether it's, that might make somebody upset, I get it, but process, control, decision, it's in the state handbook, operator responsible charge, you can look that up too. Certain things fall on me, for the most part, I didn't have to tell them what to do, they did what they needed to do, um, we're just too late to do it. The few times I did tell them what to do, huge opposition, so, I think that's what it came down to. They, gradual buildup, and then when I was tasked with the job descriptions, they knew they weren't gonna like what they saw, and it blew up. And, like I said, I asked for it to be destroyed, it was not passed, but I was the world's biggest enemy at that point, I didn't want them to leave.
Nobody wanted them to leave.
No.
Oh, you wanted to talk to them.
That happened, it was to defuse Jeremy's anger towards him and to get the other two away, because they all ganged up on him the month previously, and it was, it was ongoing. So, it was to defuse a problem, and what Stacy has put out to the public in this area is untrue, and that's all I have to say.
And I, and I spoke to him multiple occasions before that to try to reason with him.
Yeah, we didn't...
And he just totally ignored my side, cause everything I said to him apparently wasn't a lie. So, even if I say anything to him now, he's not gonna believe it, he has 21 things that he wants questions to, no matter what we tell him, he's not gonna believe it. So, that's why I'm not, I'm not fueling that situation, I, I have nothing to say.
But let's make them a board member.
Yeah.
We'll see, uh, Mr. Alagretto votes. For me, it's gonna be showing what he's gonna be, what kind of supervisor he's gonna be for the next six years.
I hope I can be that, I mean, I would try.
I hope he reaches out to us to discuss it with us.
If he was gonna do that, he would, he would have been here.
If, if he would decide the incorrect way, I believe we should, we have grounds for impeachment and...
That's exactly right.
I hope he reaches out to us to hear our side and makes a decision based off of that.
He also needs to hear how, and I'm using myself as example, how he was treating customers.
Absolutely.
Out, out in, out in the field, and, I mean, I'll use my case, cause I was there. Out, out in, out in the field. And I mean, I'll use my case because I was there.
We fought.
I, this board voted twice.
For the Lily Blow-Up.
For the Lily Blow-Up.
Oh, my God.
One person stopped it both times. And also, we had a lady down in Cali-Dani that paid her rate.
Oh, yeah.
She had to wait months and months and months because, yeah, we don't like that person. We're not gonna do that today.
And Patrick, you were not ahead of maintenance to, to how, you should, you should not have had to keep, to have kept reminding that.
Right.
Over and over again.
Yeah, that's how it was too. If I said anything.
Well, that was their fault. So they didn't have to do anything, and the things that they had let go, as Patrick has brought to our attention, and he and Justin have, have fixed things. And they, other two didn't do it. They were just, you know.
That's why it was so many miles on the.
Out in front of the. Even the day that they painted hybrids, they were out in front of my house, and yes, I watched. And I timed. Four minutes it took them.
Wait in front of our house.
And then there was overspray all over the truck after they left, and it's still on and you can't get it off. It's, you know.
I got most of it, but I actually have it on. There are still spots on the truck.
Jim held the hose and Stacy took his hand and wiped it like dust, and then he sprayed it with red paint. And that's not what was believed and said it had to be power washed and all that.
I think they did some prep work beforehand. I wasn't around. I, if I, if I would have gone and seen, I would have been checking up on them.
As far as putting on a board member, Keith, didn't you say in the past that the, that the supervisor just let it up?
Yeah, a lot of times we'd, they, we'd, you know, we'd.
Or at least that they had, you know.
When Linda Quinn was here, she wanted Jimmy Patrick gone there, and she went to Jeremy Rippey and said, I want Jimmy Patrick.
No, I don't, I don't think. Well, I know she, I know she did, but there was something else fueling that fire, you know?
I'll, I'll say this. I'll say this.
Oh, I, no, 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 I believe it. It didn't matter. Believe it.
They wanted somebody else on board to back them.
Yeah, because there was a lot of heat coming, a lot of heat coming for Rippey.
And. I'll just say that they wanted you, they wanted you on the board to back them and.
I just hope everybody has a concern that please goes to the next supervisor to be, and they stand up to them, just like.
The last.
Yeah, I would appreciate everybody voicing their opinion on it.
Well, I don't know if I'm helping all, but I'm on the sure authority board now, so if you know that.
Oh, did they actually appoint him?
Yeah.
Wow.
Congratulations, Keith.
These people that, that.
Something's up, Will, something's up.
He's out of vote.
Yeah, these people.
But the agenda's up.
Yeah, yeah. All right, let's move on.
Broke your phone. Anybody else have anything? Bob, did you have any?
Yeah, yeah.
Questions?
I guess one brief one. Since this is water and water quality and everything, is it possible for this to be voted on by the community at large and not just one or two supervisors that have it?
We're gonna find out.
Okay.
What do you mean, the person appointed? The person appointed, is that what you're saying?
No, I guess, would it be something that's.
Supervisors is what you're.
Are you talking about selling, selling the law?
Yeah, I mean, possibly in a fall election.
Yes.
I mean, like the community at large, I, I don't know if it's, that's ever been done, but.
I don't think, with this supervisor here tonight, I don't think that's the way he wants to go. He wants to see everybody get along. He'll get, he'll get that from us as long as they leave us alone. I mean, we're pounded on all the time.
We are very cooperative. Constantly. But if we are not.
We have the best water and.
We do.
The right water people and operator. We don't need to solve it.
And money in the bank, the money in the bank.
Thank you, Kristen. I appreciate it.
Our rates would go sky high.
Yeah.
That's right.
Like, like with.
And don't let anything I ask to put anything like that on the ballot, because a lot of people don't know any of this.
Yeah.
And they'd say, oh, well, that, that probably better, now look for it.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the appointment of a new member be by public, because I think there'd be a lot of people surprised to see the support that I would get. I will, I will come through with that. I, I'm confident that I'd have a lot of.
From now on.
Whether they agree or not, I guess.
Every year, you know you're gonna have one reappointment or appointment to your third. So you need to make your feelings known to the supervisor.
Absolutely.
Before they make their appointment. I think that's what, that's what you were saying too.
And but they did put a letter to the supervisors.
I don't.
I, the one, the one letter was never even picked up and looked at. The other two supervisors did pick it up and look at it.
You gotta do it every year because you have one up every year.
Everything we bring to board is, they don't pay it.
Usually in other municipalities, if a board, say the water authority or whatever, they recommend to the city council or supervisors, they recommend that person that are usually appointed. Because they've worked with that person, yes.
Not here, not in this town.
Well, the applicants send their applications to the supervisors. But you can go and get copies and review them and make your application to the supervisor.
Usually the supervisors, your city council or whatever, your secretary, that for the supervisor should send a letter to the board saying, is this who applied on the date with their applications? Then the board here would look at it, and then we would appoint, we would recommend who we would want, but we never got anything.
Yeah, that's how it should be.
That's how it should be, yes.
I agree.
Let's, let's.
And that also gives the board the power, if you've got somebody that's disruptive or the board can say, hey, you know.
Absolutely.
Maybe one of the, well, the applicants.
If they appoint that person, they called me the words that they called, I can't sit on a board like that.
Yeah, that's.
I think they called the, yeah.
And that's what they want.
Yes.
Yes, Debbie, but then.
The word that he called me.
I understand, but if you step down, they're gonna put another one in your seat.
Yeah.
Well, then you would let her go to.
I have no right to call what they called me.
I agree, totally. Everybody needs to bring everybody they can. Yeah, you know, and somebody made a comment to me one time about the valley, that all the good people stay in the house. There's, there's a lot of truth, you know, but it's getting them out, getting them out and coming in help.
Well, they tabled the motion, so I think our board should get the, get the applicants that were submitted. And in my opinion, since it was tabled, the seat's still open. It's open for application if anyone else is. So.
You want?
As far as I'm concerned, the board made, this board made an opinion on who they felt was best to serve this board.
Yes, we do.
What we should do is get all the applicants and, and, and submit another letter to the township saying, this is who we want, number one. Number two, number three, these are our choices in order, who we would feel would be best for the job.
That's reason one.
And then when they pick number four, number five.
I don't know how they reviewed them though. They just took, took number one rabbit out of the hat and that was it.
Why don't you just say that we've worked very well with Mr. Verdi. We feel he's very qualified and knowledgeable. And we feel we, all, each member of the board feels they continue working very well with him and we want, we pass the decision.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah. I think we should say, Will.
Instead of one, two, three, four, tell them who you want.
Yeah. Alrighty. Any other, any other question?
Yeah, Bob didn't have a turn yet.
Oh, yeah.
It just, you know, Linda Quinn did a letter, which I don't call.
See that letter, Bob?
No, no. Go cover what he feels best.
Just the first two sentences is kinda striking to me. It says, on December nineteenth, I was out of town with relatives for the holidays, so I did not attend your meeting on that date. Now, this is addressed to the board of supervisors. The second sentence is, oh, wait, we're after listening to the audio recording. I wonder where she got that recording?
Oh, I wonder where.
Kinda pondered over that point. But I mean, you have a, a letter out there from Stacy, you have a letter from Linda Quinn, there's echoes back and forth between them, but they, they play the same, same employment there. But I see now, Patrick, it's written a letter, which I intend to get a copy of. And I, I think, you know, attending the meetings, reading the letters, seeing people's reaction and conduct. You know, I, I think the board is doing fine. I mean, I think we're a cohesive group and and what I say, you work well together. And why, why change something that's not broken?
I think, yes, appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, any more questions? Gus, sit up.
Number.
Go ahead. Okay, approval of the agenda.
What did I say was, I wrote one. Oh, yeah. On new business, I'd like to add number five. Padlocks and rekeying of the treatment facility, treatment plant and facilities.
Could you say that again, Patrick? Could you say that again?
Yep, padlocks, purchase of padlocks and rekeying of water authority facilities.
Re what?
Reheat, rekey.
Changeable like master key.
That's all a lot.
Rekeying a lot.
And then six, I guess, well, Debbie mentioned one, number six, looking into a, for a, for an automatic gate. And there's a gate repair at the back of the plant that I think is worth looking at too. So gate repair and gate over.
These are things that they can't do in the house, so.
So I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for January tenth.
Yeah, I'll second that.
What's the others write, Doug?
He would, he would the addition of the padlock rekeying of that plant and quote electric gate and gate repair at the back of the plant.
All in favor?
I.
Seconded.
Okay. Who did?
Seconded.
I seconded. All opposed? All in favor? You nailed this. You nailed it.
Okay. Approval of the minutes.
I reviewed them all already after draft them. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the meeting of December fifth, twenty nineteen, and the special meeting of December twentieth, twenty nineteen.
I'll say.
All in favor? I agree.
I think in one sentence, I left out a couple of words. And I had one, the next paragraph, I would, I would also like, what is the procedure for this individual? Probably two notes, if you can. The third paragraph under number one, the water authority, the second sentence.
Like to know.
Like, what is the procedure?
I will make the motion for the approval of the minutes for December fifth and December twentieth with the grammatical error fix on December fifth.
I'll second that with the.
And all in favor?
I.
Opposed?
Check your report.
The balance sheet checking count is of eleven thirty nineteen with one oh one four, one oh one four fifty eight eighty four. We had deposits of eighteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. After checks and an NSF check fee, we have a balance of ninety-four thousand, one oh seven fifty-six. And the savings account as of eleven thirty, we have one seventy, one hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and eighty cents. Interest income is one oh nine thirty-four. Balance and savings account as of twelve thirty, one nineteen is one seventy, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
That's one of the healthiest looking bank accounts in all J Township.
No.
All right. Also, do you approve the bill?
I have a question on the bill, just for would be number thirty-one, Amazon Business.
Amazon Business is, we order different supplies from Amazon, and it's cheaper for us to do that.
Okay.
That's, that's the business. That's what we have to make a jump out of.
I, can I make a suggestion? To alleviate that question, just put supplies in parentheses that when you're.
Okay.
That's.
Three hundred and fifty.
Okay.
That's, okay. That's just one. And then the next one, I see you have two lab testing. Patrick, Mahaffey and Analytical Services, is, is there a reason why there's two different labs?
Yeah, it's, Mahaffey's cheaper on some things, Analytical Services is cheaper on one, on some things, and they both pick up at no cost, so I just pick who's cheaper.
Excellent. Thank you.
Our total accounts payable for December was twenty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents.
Need a motion? For approval of the bill?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'm gonna second that motion.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? And I abstain due to my payroll.
Fourth one. Letter sent to J Township supervisors on the paving end.
That was from us too, then, I believe.
From you on?
Yep.
Letter from J Township Authority.
We mentioned that earlier. They said they will no longer be in need of electronic meter read files. The paper copies will be, they'll be able to utilize the paper copies. And I sent them an email with the volume of the sludge I have in the basin. They requested that. And they said they consult with their engineers and licensed operators and recommend we do not send any sludge from the water authority as it will cause issues with both the equipment and testing. I, I mean, that's their choice. The engineer part, the same engineers recommended to me approaching them about it, so that's a little confusing to me. But that's their choice. If they can't take it, that's fine.
Can I have any of that information for when I go to the next sewage clearing?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy of the email.
You got any idea how many gallons?
It's calculated on there. I don't know right now off the bat.
Excellent.
It's not calculated.
Appreciate it.
The mechanism for transport, you were gonna take it from Holland Old and put it in the digester?
Yes.
If it wasn't through the collection line.
No, we were not gonna send it through any pipes. It would be from the trucks directly to the digesters. My understanding is at that point, it would just need to be pressed.
Yes.
So with that being said, I have a question for you guys. If that plant can't take our sludge, what, what would be the reason why? If they're up to grade and everything?
And, and again, I've, I've got one night under my belt. Let me, let me do some homework. Like to have what you have, and I will definitely approach. Because.
Because that's the question we're gonna be asked by the supervisors. So I'd like.
I lived before one time, what happened, they did it with a pipe and an incident happened.
Blew up all the blowers. We had to buy two new blowers.
Yeah.
And we never got repaid from the water authority.
But this is different now.
What's different?
Do it in a pipe.
Yeah, I think we will not.
They did it over by a truck.
And you're still dumping in the digester where the blowers are.
There's no blowers, is there?
Yeah, an itch dies, actually. There's blowers at the bottom. And when they plug up, they blow so hard, they burn up the things. I'm not, I'm not joking with you. They send, they send a bunch over there, and that's why I'm totally against that.
What year was this?
Oh, I, I can't, I can't. Uh, oh, I, I can't, I could find out the year.
Okay.
But, uh, I have pictures where they had to clean, they cleaned it out, they had to take the whole tank out, clean it out and there's little pods in there that's set all the way across each, uh, which I call the vat or whatever, the ponds, and and each one of them, when they come on, they have to blow so long for the oxygen. Okay, then they mix, well, if that sludge in that gets down around there, it cannot, it, it can't blow the air, okay? Out of them pods in the bottom. Yeah, and when they can't do that, okay, and I'm serious, it blowed, we, we paid ten, fifteen thousand dollars, I, you know, don't got the total cost. But I remember it all because I was there, we almost got fined because we didn't have a backup blower. You know what I'm saying?
That was sent from the plant through those pipes some time?
Yes, yes, but it don't matter, if you dump it in there, it's in there.
They would have dumped the aerator first, I'd say.
The aerators are in the, in the tanks, they're in the, in them tanks and the problem, another problem you have is when you squeeze it out, it don't squeeze like normal shit. You know what I mean, it packs, I'm sorry, it just doesn't, it, it comes out like a grease, if it's that crap you sent over before, it's slimy, you probably know, it's like, it's real slimy and silky, you can't press it, it just runs out all over the sides, makes a mess, I mean, you can go ask Perry, he was a mess himself trying to clean that up.
Well, that's, that's reasonable.
That's reasonable, but if you don't have an answer like that.
Well, I can show you the answers, I mean, I'll, I'll dig out my pictures and I'll show you how the aerators work and.
It's best to know.
You answered, you answered it better than they did, I guess is the issue.
Well, I was there and we almost got fined for it.
If it's that slimy of a sludge, what, they make aeration beds for it, we can dry it out.
A lot of places with land will put it in a drying bed, so.
And what do they do to ship it through the pipe?
Uh, so my grinder pump, like the grinder pump at the water plant, um, like the, the sewer water goes into, there's a valve I can open, it'll flow into that and then the pumps go up the hill.
Alright.
Yeah, that's a reasonable answer, I mean, I, that's why.
Now, I, I always did say if you cleaned the bath, yours out real good and you constantly gave it a little bit at a time. I don't think it would hurt anything.
Yeah.
But you have to, you can't send down a whole load at one time. Because they were sending sometimes ten, twenty thousand gallons a day of water.
Who was doing that, Gus?
Uh, the water authority, they were dumping twenty thousand, ten thousand gallons a day in at one time.
Every, every backwash.
Every, every backwash come in, but it was just clear water, but on, on, constantly, constantly, yours was getting cleaned out. But you can't back it up and wait for the sludge to build up two, three inches or two, three feet thick in there, then expect to do that. Now, if you cleaned yours out and totally worsted, you know, once a month or something, that might work, I'm not sure.
Well, thanks for the explanation.
Alright, we did, we lay the pipe in, uh, the first time that we did it. Over at the Sportsman, we built a barrier with Thompson over there and made a drying bed and.
That's a good.
And it dried out?
That's a good.
Oh, it's beautiful. It's been a tough.
That wouldn't have counted if they had a grating, would it?
No.
Missed a lot of work. They could sell it for Thompson.
Yeah.
That's, that's probably your best bet, get D E P to let you dry it off.
The permitting is the top part, um, I've discussed that with D E P, they said it's not worth permitting, just send it to the landfill. As far as I found out, so far, I have to do four view analysis, that's eighteen hundred dollars, might as well ship it to me, I have to do it every time. But we can look at this thing.
Yep.
I'll still look at it.
So, still give me that. Give me that everybody, please.
Alright, letter from, uh, Tropso and Estoshia.
That's just a name change.
Alright. Okay, letter from Patrick Vorkovich.
I, I'll read it if you guys want it, um, if they're interested in that, so, um, January eighth, twenty twenty, dear board members, I'm writing concerning the employment agreement that I'm currently signed under with the authority. In the agreement, there's a non-compete clause which prevents me from becoming employed at a different water treatment plant or distribution system within a hundred mile radius of J Township Water Authority while the agreement is active. There's also reimbursement clause that states that if I were to terminate my employment, I would be responsible for refunding within thirty days, all costs paid by, paid by the authority pursuant to the agreement. Former employee Stacy Snyder has also signed a nearly identical employment agreement which includes the same non-compete and reimbursement clauses. It has now been over three months since he terminated his position with the authority and the board has not acted to enforce his agreement. Under the agreement, I am to express any contract breaches to the authority within writing, the authority will then have twenty days to resolve the breach. If the authority chooses not to reinforce Mr. Snyder's agreement, agreement, precedents will be set, therefore, the non-compete and reimbursement clauses in my employment agreement will subsequently be unenforceable, sincerely, Patrick Vorkovich. It's a tough letter, the facts are the facts.
Yep.
It's only right, um, I agree, if the board enforces it for me, if the board wants to enforce it for me, they have to enforce it for him. If you choose not to enforce it with him, then.
Do you make a motion?
I will, uh.
So what do we got?
Um, I'm not sure.
You got?
It's at least close to a thousand bucks. He was, so he was paid, um, his time for, to go to training for the twelve month or twelve week course, um, he was paid his time for an eight hour day, um, and he got paid for the day to go to other training and paid for registration, so basically it's that stuff, um. In a way, it might be, it might cost the authority more to pursue it than what it's worth, but I had to submit the letter and so the board can make a decision of what they want to do and then, like I said, if, if his contract's upheld, you can uphold my contract. If not.
Absolutely.
What's the point of the law, you know what I mean?
How old is his contract?
Um, I believe they're both five year contracts with a one year non-compete beyond that, so his contract, if it ends on twenty twenty, there will still be a, uh, a non-compete for an additional year beyond that. That's to, I was told that's to incur adjust to negotiate a new contract. So, that's a copy of his contract.
She can read it.
Oh, it's, it's like fourteen pages, there's no way to read that.
I think it should be, it should, uh, this.
Yep.
Yep.
His contract is on file at the office.
Yep, I, I feel that his contract should be.
He needs to make.
Well, that's a poor. Well, I, I, I need a motion to, uh, pursue, pursue this contract, correct? Would be the proper, proper wording for that.
They're paying eighty dollars an hour for an attorney.
What we still need to do.
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we contact and proceed against this, uh, breach of contract with past employee Stacy Snyder.
And I'll second that one. All in favor?
Alright.
Motion here.
I am stating due to my contract and also not feeling fired. And I'd like that on record, please.
Yep.
I'd like that in the minutes, that I am stating your contract and.
You told me.
You're using the school to fire.
Are you gonna write that letter or are you gonna have your attorney write?
Yeah, he's handled it over the last month, keep it going. Okay, delinquencies.
We're in the middle, gonna be going again.
Maintenance report.
Maintenance reports, maybe by myself, it was also. I made a goof up on the mileage for the truck last month, um, thought I wrote that down, but this month was sixty five thousand, six hundred thirty, three one calls, checked the oil in the compressors, added oil compressor one, uh, compressor one now cycles automatically, I think I know you at the last meeting, compressor one is, we're having issues. And we are having issues again, so we're gonna look into that, get some phone calls out. Digging repair leak on the grade, T Berry Street, um, they saddled, broke, uh, checked and tightened the slow leaking meter set, picked up supplies to sheet the interior of the three tank building, we have some mouse issues, they're just deep in the, in the insulation and make them, sort of, button up, keep them out. Checked the sevens, found that the heater at the well was off, uh, electrical problem, we over tightened previous crew, not sure who, over tightened the clamp, um, it lasted this long and then finally insulation was bad enough and it arced. Went to Burke's to get a new heater, had to order one, took space heaters to the building to heat with them for now, uh, the pipes did freeze, uh, everything has since thawed, the main well piping seems fine. Sample lines and faucet need repaired and we're testing the oil heater to see if it can be repaired, um, Bob Shaw might as help us out with that, seems like it just needs a new motor, so one dollar fix, it's worth a shot, I think.
You know what it sounds like to make the happen, I think, setting that damp building?
Well, it was right at the clamps, it was over tightened and it, it stripped.
No, gives on this heater for repair?
Yeah.
Didn't you say it needs a new motor?
It, the motor fried because I shorted it.
Oh, the motor fried.
How much is a heater?
We got the new ones at the, I just picked it up, it was two hundred and sixty bucks.
I didn't want you to repair that one.
Okay. I think it'd be good to have an extra on hand.
Well, if I do.
Because if this one.
Because if that one.
Right, but we, but we, we waited to, we waited three weeks to get this one, I think it'd be worth having the other one on hand, if this goes down, I can hang it and put it in and drive, we'll have to use space heaters.
I can show them a trip and how to get them motors going, get them. It's not completely burnt out.
Yeah, it's twenty bucks.
It'll be safe. Yeah, if Bob fixed that, he never, he didn't charge anything.
And Bob hasn't charged, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
I'll wait.
Uh, so yeah, testing it, fire repairing it, seeing if it'll be used as a, as a spare, I think it'll be a very good idea to do.
Twenty bucks for a new motor?
Yep. He tested the element, the element's good, so, well, we think so, we. Checked the dig site on T Berry Grade, um, got a complaint about that, I guess we had, it was over Facebook, I guess we left a lot of garbage. We had caution tape, there was no garbage and, uh, it was really wet ground and if it froze, there's not much we can do till, till spring, so we're gonna keep an eye on it. Adjusting installed roof and lights on the termant backhoe. Operations report, uh, made by myself in dense spec, distribution flow, six point three million gallons, produced six point four million gallons, five point eight million was from the surface plant, six hundred eleven thousand was from the well. Completed submitted D E P reports for November, completed daily lab tests, sent bacteria samples out, regulatory samples picked up, backwashed and back flushed manholes as needed, logged monthly data to Excel, noticed distribution spike on SCADA about thirty gallons per minute, started looking, uh, we found it on the old grade on T Berry Street, saddle was broken, installed new saddle, reconnected tap, um, there's only one tap on that line, so we did have to put a bundle of this out. Took phosphate to the well, cleaned chlorine analyzers, checked calibration, recalibrated if necessary, troubleshooting the well building, hit you a heater issue, inspected the well plumbing, found the well well is okay, bought supplies to support the pump through the roof permanently, helped build supports and lift the roof to normal height, uh, with Jim Antonio and my dad, and calibrated termites.
First of all, I'd like to thank Chris Walkovich and Jim Antonio for doing a fine job of repairing that, uh, roof for the pump building there. No thanks needed.
Yep.
It's all okay, Jeff.
Yep.
Good, that's good.
Yeah, you're welcome.
These guys are right on top of it and you know what the hell you're doing there.
I don't know, this is the first big guy I've watched.
And also big thanks to all the local contractors in town, they wouldn't even come do anything.
Yeah.
Well, you guys.
Oh, and another question I have, under the operations here, I have just got to find that leak over there on the T Berry.
Um, so I started to skate the thing and then. Yeah, I saw this spike, I started tracing my steps, um, so I did a repair previously, um, for Victor Catalone, um, when I shut, so I was shutting the valve off of, off of the Bucky's house for him, shuts off this line, and I could hear a s- very, very slight leak.
That's when it stuck on the pipe to your.
Yeah, when I first started doing it, I didn't hear it, but the last time I opened it, I could hear it, I told him I'm gonna keep an eye on that, nothing was boiling up, um, so that was the second place I looked, the first place I looked was the blow off we put in at Peter's Keith, just to make sure that didn't blow apart, it was fine.
Speaking of that, I brought that up.
Yeah.
That's dry.
Is it?
Completely, so.
That must have been cracked for some time then.
That, that was cracked under there for.
Yep.
It, it is absolutely bone dry and it was never dry since I owned it.
That makes sense.
Cause that was a big water loss then for decades.
That happened in one from September or October.
Yes, yeah, yeah, and so.
Oh, the blow off that we put in.
Our second spot to check was Catalone, because I told him I'd keep an eye on it and sure enough, it finally reared itself, it came up.
Yeah.
We found it, so, um, quick fix there.
Good.
Patrick, I once mentioned about, uh, insertion flow meter in the paddle wheel, did you ever get a chance to look for that?
I did not find it, I'll dig through again and see if it's way back, but I, nothing that I can see.
I, I know it was fallen, but I don't know where it is. Oh, yeah, I do remember that.
So is that it? That's it, one last one. Hey, moving on to old business, Houston Township.
Okay, um, I think good news, I would like to, uh, I believe we can remove Houston Township from old business, their account is paid in full, zero dollar balance.
Here, here.
What level is found?
What's your number?
That's a tough question.
It's closed, you can't repeat it, um.
Is sixty thousand close in the neighborhood?
Yep, I'm not.
I hope we don't have any more trouble with.
It's written into, from, from both lawyers, we're not permitted to talk about anything.
It was, it was.
That's lawyer talk, I know.
It was, it was.
I don't doubt the lawyers did that.
They can't quite do that.
Thing is, it's paid in full.
It's paid in full, it was very, we felt a very reasonable amount, we, I mean, we made the offer and it was accepted, so.
And they're gonna continue to pay you?
They're gonna continue to, yep. Uh, they're.
Their full windows agreement is a rock.
Yes, so they are, there is going to be a new agreement drafted, um, to effectively and it, prevent this from happening in perpetuity.
That's very wild.
So, and then we also made a suggestion, rather than meet every twenty years, rather than meet every ten years, meet every five years, both boards, both entire boards, there will be no more chairperson meeting chairperson, that was the problem all along. I think the whole entire problem could have been eliminated, both boards have said that, both boards have agreed to that. So, we're never gonna walk down this path again, at least as long as I'm around, as long as.
How, how long did this go on with the two chairmen?
Two thousand seventeen, as far as back as I know, it's not.
Right around when I was hired.
Possibly beyond that all.
Twenty, definitely twenty sixteen.
And twenty sixteen.
Alrighty, that's why we're, you're the fly's board right now, it's getting a little tracky, it's real smooth.
And learning what I've learned in my tenure here, um, when one of the previous meetings was made from chairperson to chairperson, I asked, do you want me to be there? The, the answer to that question was, no, you have a job to do, stay at the plant. The next time that comment's made to me, I will gladly use a vacation day, because I should have been there. I think this all could have been prevented, so.
Well, Kevin and I were both sitting on board.
Yeah, it's just amazing.
We were left out of a lot of stuff.
There was never, there was really no fighting between the boards, once both boards sat down and talked about it, it was similar, it was easy.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
And, and how many thousands do you turn in?
Quite a bit. Quite a bit.
We could try and put that on another case too, reimbursement.
Okay, then, then I may, I need a motion to remove Houston Township.
I'll make a motion to remove Houston Township from old business.
Yeah, second the motion.
All day.
One hundred percent.
All five.
Okay, C D D G Graham.
Okay, Brian wasn't able to mention the site, anyway, I don't blame him, um, he did want me to make sure. Actually, that's still a possibility, um, so we have three more easements that were dropped off today by Tracy Gerber, um, so there will be those three easements and one remade, I believe, and the project will have a bit.
The one remaining, is, is that still, uh, one at the top of the hill or?
One at the top of Chestnut, um, the people that live there are not the landlord. One at the top of Chestnut, um, the people that live there are not the landlord, we have to figure that out, so, we'll track down what. So, and then, Brian's coming up Tuesday, we're gonna go down on ours. Alright.
In other words, we might need a couple forty five inch for that area. I mean, the elbows, not the, not the other ones.
Okay, pump building roof.
I think we, we, we talked about.
Pump building roof, it's now supported, it will hold through the winter. We, it's not permanently fixed, we still have to get a roof audit to replace the broken, the cracks and everything on it, but we'll wait for better weather to do that, so.
In the spring, we have plans of, uh, putting some trucks with, and getting some metal roof, red metal roof on it.
Get something done, on the way around. Okay, uh, industrial appraisal, that's Sharon.
Industrial appraisal, I made a contact and, um, finally got ahold of them and they need some information and they're gonna give a real price on how that is a temporary meeting. I just need to send them some information, they'll give us a quote on how it's gonna, how much it will cost. So that we know that our buildings and everything is, uh, covered, covered correctly.
In case the pump group building calls over?
Yeah.
You said it's never gonna happen.
No.
But they just, they just not obviously never.
Some dealers, some choose them personally.
I need to get some information.
Big rock from outer orbit, that is a break in pole.
Alright, phosphate. Oh, you and I too.
Yeah.
Phosphate. Okay. As far as the phosphate, I have a public water supply permit application, mostly filled out by Brian, I need a signature, um, by our chairperson. And, also with the phosphate, uh, we need some supplies, I, we discussed the tank mixer and the tank, uh, the tank mixer's on the way. We will eventually need two, I only ordered one, in case for some reason we don't end up switching the phosphate. We're not up to mixers, I don't see why we wouldn't switch completely though, um. And, the tank was quite expensive, I went out for some prices. USA Blue Book has a set of tanks, they're two hundred and forty-two each, fifty-five gallon, um, I think, um, it would be a very smart idea for us to replace all of the day tanks in the plant. Cause right now, I'm measuring them with a yardstick and raising, and doing it in inches, not the most accurate, not the most proper, um. So these will have gallon radiations on them, so for the total of those tanks, uh, with freight would be sixteen hundred, they're one thousand two hundred and three dollars eighty-two cents. And, we would be paying that, if not close to it, with the other, with the other tank, um, I don't have the other prices in front of me, but.
Now, the new tanks, I have a question, the new tanks have the outside cyclos, so you can see what, what levels in it?
They're translucent, yeah, so you can see the level.
It'll change right near the.
It'll, it's really on the side, ten gallon, twenty gallon.
Whole tank is translucent.
They package how much is the mixer?
Six hundred, I believe, and I think one tank was eight hundred.
Yeah.
How many really?
Fifty-five gallon.
Oh, they're fifty-five? Don't have any that small, but bigger ones.
I haven't checked, I can ask them. So, by asking, they'll then drag it down.
Yeah, how many count them?
Uh, five drums, chlorine at the plant, uh, packs at the plant, phosphate at the plant, uh, phosphate at the well, and chlorine at the well.
They need a motion?
I have a second motion.
On favor?
I have. I will.
Five more, thank you.
Gee.
And, do we work, well, let's redo the previous motion, um. Or I guess it's too late, is, okay, make a separate motion to, I'll make the second, the separate motion to have Jim sign the application for a water supply permit for the phosphate.
Oh, I'll second that, maybe?
Favor?
So. So we are clear.
Okay, heat, P A, water, small water, and sewer, he didn't give me an update for that, so.
That's only due February thirteenth.
Okay, so it hasn't been.
Yeah, it hasn't been a long period.
No update. But we did submit.
Yes, we submitted, yes.
The one we paid by a hundred dollars.
Yes.
And on the new business. Can, can define trespass?
It's a must.
Yes, definitely a defined trespass.
Give them an overview of what it is, I guess.
It's about Stacy coming to the office and, um.
Hold up a second. Hold up a second, change your date.
You can use the other one for half the left text.
Bound, bound.
Yeah, the one.
Just working, what happens? I like this one. Okay.
Okay, Gab, continue please.
Um, this is about Stacy Snyder, uh, we're, we've called the state police, um, it's now going to go into our solicitor's hands. We can't deal with it any longer.
There were a couple, at least two or three instances, um, he came down to the office, was very disrespectful, disrespectful to Sharon. And, there was a time I was there too, and he was very disrespectful to me, uh, yelled vulgarities at us both, so.
And the new, um.
Yeah, even most recently, uh, Justin went to ask him a question, there were tires left at the office. There were tires left at the office that were Linda Quinn's, she gave them to Stacy, he left them there. Learning from previous lessons, I guess, before we throw anything out that might belong to someone else, uh, we figured we better cover our bases. Cause the day I throw him out, he's gonna submit a complaint letter, so, um, I asked, well, Justin said, you want me to go talk to Stacy, I said, that's up to you. Cause he was on his back porch, he's on his back porch frequently, um.
More than he wanted.
He was on his back porch, Justin said, you want me to go talk to him, I said, if you want to, just be professional, um, he went and talked to him and, um. According to Justin, Stacy goes, what the H do you want? And, Justin said, I have these tires here, do you want them, and he goes, no. And he goes, wait, does Joey Burdy want them, yeah, I'll take them. We left them, we left them outside the office and they've been picked up, but, uh.
She would've wrote a receipt for them.
Probably, probably, took a picture, I did, I just, I would've stuck around and waited for him to get there, but.
They did that while I was not working.
Yeah, um, I, less contact I have with him, the better, um, so, it's not only me and Sharon, it's even with Justin. Granted, Justin approached him, but, you gotta conduct business, you had to ask the question.
What's going on?
And this is the same, uh, party that, that raised the law, it came with Deb, and these guys got into water plant that day. Actually, it's three people, not one, it's three people.
So basically, what it will do, obviously, we can't keep him out of the office, um, but, cause it's, I mean, you have to conduct business, but, um.
Yeah, but any visits to the office, they're unnecessary.
Visits to the office have to be made arrangement in advance, and you can bet either myself or Justin, or both of us will be there when we know he's coming there, that way. If she's verbally assaulted, we know about it, and, um.
That's what he called it, that, that's just sexual harassment, I mean, he's gone beyond calling him.
Oh, no, no, that is, that was.
Yeah, you're talking, you're talking, Stacy's still hurting.
That was Jim, well, he said stuff to him.
Yeah.
There's a three, regardless, they call them the three, uh, three with that last word.
Regardless, unprofessional.
I'm not saying it anymore, I'll just tell you all that, if somebody calls me that again, I know.
Inappropriate, unprofessional, she's up there herself, she doesn't deserve any of that, um, so, we need to be better.
I would be very uncomfortable being in an office by myself after someone called me.
Well, I am, I'm not afraid to stay up there, it's just that I think I should be made with respect, I should've never been called that name. Linda Quinn should've did something when I brought that up at the September, um, executive session, and she did not.
Yeah, did not.
I was told by somebody outside of this whole town and outside of this whole area, that I should've followed, went to a lawyer, filed suit against all of them.
I'll make this comment too, since it's recorded here and there, um, I was a witness to what was said. That, that time, they were saying, you're trying to get me fired, you're trying to get us fired, so I said to them, I'll make a point. By rights, I should go up there and tell her what you said, and then you'd be on the street, but, I will protect you, I won't say anything, prove a point that I'm not trying to get you fired. Well, it proved nothing, but.
I'm not dumb, I've worked around people, I've worked in factories, and I, I know how guys are, and I know what they call people, it's very unprofessional, sorry, that it had to come to this.
Well, no.
Well, he would've been fired if he, if, if, if he had you quick.
Well, it's, it was just like with that Lily too.
For the record, for the record, since there's.
He told you.
He called you stuff too.
Well, yeah, but.
For the record, since there are other ears.
Executive hearing, I didn't, I didn't say a word to him. Yeah, all you were doing was come out and talk about the water service at the church, cause you didn't give them a quote and tear it down.
I think we need to clarify, since there's an unemployed hearing active, um, we're talking about the part-time employee, not Stacy that said the allegations.
Right.
Or said what he said, or at least when I heard it, said it, said it about her.
It's just, don't be leaving things.
Hold on, please, um, cause Deb, Deb mentioned if we did know he said that, he would've been fired. We have to be careful saying things like that, it was not.
I meant Jim hot.
Right, it was not Stacy Snyder, Stacy Snyder, where there was no intention of firing him.
No.
Now, Stacy cannot go to the plant.
I, you know, I, I, I brought something up, and I, um.
Under this, he, he wouldn't be able to, and that's at my discretion, so no.
At, at, what the attorney's gonna write up?
Yeah.
Right.
And even, and even now, I would ask him to leave, and if he showed up, and, or, if he showed up and didn't leave, I would call the.
The authorities, yeah.
That's for, that's for anybody that I feel shouldn't be there.
The reason being, the Watergate situation.
Well, nobody should be rifling through my stuff in the plant anyway, but, uh.
Okay, why, why does, does he come to the office just to pay his bill?
No, they send it by mail.
They send it by mail, and anyway.
Then why does he come to the office?
He had a right to know where he cost you to pay before, and, uh, he said he didn't trust me, and made slight comments, and I don't think I deserve that, I've never done anything wrong, so. And you can take that recording and tell him.
No, we don't know.
Well, I, I guess, you can get out. I, I don't feel, I don't feel anybody should be at the office, or at the treatment plant, including, including Boardman. And I ain't saying nothing about Boardman, if Boardman wants to go down, I think he should be maybe accompanied by, by the chair or the vice chair. You know, just, just to protect you guys, but, I mean, that's something the attorney, you know, can decide whether that's a good idea, cause as far as I'm concerned, I just.
This is the me too, plenty of women have filed sexual harassments against a lot of people. It's, it's the year twenty twenty.
Yep.
No more.
So we're gonna go by the attorney's recommendations now, on what to do?
No, we're gonna recommend to him and then see where he takes it.
Uh, because we're gonna have some people there that are gonna be, uh, not allowed on it, and we're gonna have some people that are gonna be non-compliant with this defiant trespass, and then.
It's necessary, no matter what happens, you can't come into it.
This is more than one person that.
Any, a private place of business, if you went into it and acted that way, they'd kick you out and tell you never to come back, so we need to do the same thing, yep.
Zero Tom is the most one.
There you go.
Zero.
Alrighty, uh, we need a motion to take that. Alright, need a, a motion to, uh, take to the attorney about the, uh, defined trespass, uh, about how we want to handle that.
Well, can we put it against, or do we have to range of names?
I don't think you should mention names right now, with the three R that caused the rock assault.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
I think we have to specify.
Yeah, so, do I have a motion for that?
I think we have to specify.
I don't think you do, it might be attorney client calling.
Yeah, I think it is too, it's true.
You can talk to my attorney, but, uh.
Because it's on different recordings here, you know what?
I'll make the motion that we've, um.
I mean, make it in the general form, the contractor attorney about people harassing at the office or something.
And this is gonna be a permanent expulsion from the premises.
Yeah.
Let's make that point clear.
Okay, I'll second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
All opposed? Okay, approval of summer help?
Alright, alright, it's a little early, but, uh, our summer helper, William, uh, he was great last year, I have him half trained. I think it's worth us seeking to hire him again, he's still in the books, I just wanted to get the board's blessing on, um, approving him once, uh, summertime is here. Uh, the grant should be available, if it's not, um, I still think we should hire him, we don't have a part-time for now, he can fill that seat, so. He would be full-time, but, pretty cheap.
Yeah, we can talk to our, uh, personnel and handle the grants and so forth, and they can check into this stuff too.
But I, I would rather, not gonna lie, I wanted to get approval preliminarily now, while we can.
This is because he's, he's.
William up there?
William is still in school, correct?
He was, um, he's, he's taking a semester off, and he's supposed to go back.
But we, we had him as summer help, he worked at that program.
Because of the, yeah, no, it's, uh, workforce, uh, workforce development, participating workforce development, which they're not required to be in school.
No, we're not.
So that's really not a contingency, um.
I'm just, the reason why I'm asking that is because, um, if we needed some help, we would have to post it.
We posted it last year when we hired an interview, he's, he's still in the books.
Okay.
It's just, I guess, approval too.
Because we, because we started him on a program that he can get a license in, yeah.
So what, he said he took the semester off, I gave him pen, I said, you best be going back, um, don't be like everyone that doesn't, that quits and doesn't go back. He only has one semester to go, um, if we have one more summer with him, he'll have six months, and, once he takes his exam, I'll be able to sign off on his license. So, um, that'll help him.
When I, when I talk to this young lady, she seems to be a pretty confident person, he's not yapping up, it's like, yeah, just be on him, but.
I mean. You can take it on, I mean, it's not for us to, it wouldn't be permanent with us, it's just for the student.
Summer help, that's how you start a long, right there.
I had a grant last year, and he put another.
We'll have our people look into the grant list if there's availability and so forth.
We can table it, but I wanted to get the conversation going at least.
Let's table.
Cause, uh.
Table.
Alright. I agree. I'll make the motion we table it.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed?
Signature cards.
Um, we haven't updated the signature cards because of Joe being off, we weren't sure.
Yeah, before, before we knew about the municipal authorities act saying he can still be on, we were kind of in crisis mode because there was no one to sign Sharon's check, so. We had one signature, she can't sign for her, um, so, I've been added to the signature card, same situation as her, I can't sign for my own check. She can't sign for her own check, we had to do it, or she wasn't getting paid, and not paying her is illegal, so.
So basically, that's just to add him on to sign her check, cause I have to sign it.
And if they, if Joe's reappointed, we may, we can have a give you all.
You can change it back.
As it is, up now, I'm still in full authority, uh, till I'm succeeded, or I may succeed myself and see how the supervisors play the cards that day. That's why we need more people at the supervisors' meetings.
Okay, line locator.
Alright, um, in our budget, we budgeted for a line locator, I got some quotes, um, I have three from L B Water, um, there's a shot set that has a locator. There's a Sean Sett that has a locator and metal detector as a kit. Our metal detector works fine, I don't think that's necessary at this time. There's also one, they call them Rex. It has three frequencies to do different things. And the Rex Lite has two frequencies, they, you choose which frequency you want and then they give you the other frequency for another piece of equipment that you could get with it. I think the cheaper option would be the better one. We don't need the third frequency, that's for ductile iron that's over ten inches, uh, diameter.
Yeah, let's, let's enlighten the audience and tell the people how these machines work. Do they go off of a, a plastic pipe, metal pipe, or just the flow of the water?
So, plastic pipes should have a, any new plastic pipe installed should have a tracer wire, uh, just like the gas company, clamp it to the tracer wire, and you can read the metal wire, um, down the line. Our new project will have tracer wire on top of it, on top of the line.
It should be incorporated right into the pipe, not no extra line.
Yeah, they, they tape it.
Are they taped on? I thought the new question, yeah. They incorporate that there's no such thing on.
And then ductile iron pipes you can clamp on to the work, copper pipes you can clamp on to the work. Plastic with no tracer wire, it doesn't work.
Do they make the type of gates that release the sound of the water flowing through the pipe?
They have ground, they have ground microphones, but you have to be right on it. You already have to have to know where the pipe is. I think I mentioned this earlier, years past when I brought this up. If I invented a, if I invented an instrument that can tell, that can sense the flow of water four feet under the ground, I'd be...
You wouldn't be here.
I'd be a tron. We'd build would be a...
Well, I tell you what, the government has things right now, they can watch you water your flowers on your back porch in the summertime after the parties are over, so I'm sure they can come up with other things.
It's an industry standard, everybody has a line locator. We have one, it's old, it can't be repaired, um, it's obsolete. So, I would reckon, so the, the kit with the two is three thousand seven hundred, seven hundred forty-five. I feel that's unnecessary. The other two, they're both the same one, one has an extra frequency. The more expensive one is two thousand six hundred forty. The one without the extra frequency is two thousand eighty-five. I think that's all we would need.
That's your recommendation, Deb?
That is my recommendation. So...
I make a motion?
Do you get to have a trial run of this thing?
They came in and did it though.
All in favor?
Aye. They came in and did it though.
Well, they did already, okay.
This was six months ago.
Okay, number five.
I'll cover this one too. The office has already been rekeyed. I don't think that they turned much for that anyway. We don't know how many keys are out there and who has keys. We did get our keys back from a previous employee's office, um, so...
We have all our keys messes, loose, cranks.
Yeah, I'm not pointing fingers, I'm not saying it's them. I don't know who has the keys. My key is labeled with a one, Dennis's key is labeled with a five. There's only three keys we know exist. So, where are they? We don't know. So, I'd like to make a recommendation to the authority, um, to get the, all of the doors for all of our buildings rekeyed, uh, that haven't been.
Which encompasses just changing out the tumbler areas?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we're gonna get them all, I would think, get them all keyed the same, uh, keep track of the keys. And then padlocks, like for the gates, for the tanks, anything with a padlock. We've counted, it'll be thirty padlocks and I think seven doors, um, so...
You have a rough, rough estimate?
I don't have a quote yet, but I wanted to get the conversation started. I won't approve any of the work, if it's...
Well, I'll make the motion to get an estimate and see what it's gonna cost, if you know.
Right at this moment, there's an auction going on, the hardware store in Pittsburgh, and there must be fifty lots, brand-new Masters, in, in, in a batch.
And they're all the same key?
They're, I, I can't answer that, but I know the keys get there to make them all the same thing.
Is that the, this is insane. So, our thought is to get the doors opening, the, so we can get padlocks that the same key that opens the doors is in the padlocks. Then we'll keep track, and then it would be restricted keyway, so only a lock company, a big company would be the only ones to be able to duplicate it. I couldn't get it done, Justin couldn't get it done, future players.
And this auction is all this material to, to key, like the tools to do it and the locks. You could probably buy them for a song.
My, my only stipulation is the restricted keyway. As long as I can, as long as somebody can't go to Burke's and get it rekeyed or something, or, you know, get the, get a key name or something.
And another thing, I think, the only people it's gonna have is you and Justin. Nobody else needs it.
Whoever were to succeed us in the future, they go to, if they can go to the hardware store and get one made, they should be able to, because they should all be on all the non-duplicatable keys.
Well, that, that's easy said, but I make keys, I make keys every day and I got all the blanks for non-dupli, keys.
We want it to be as diffusive as possible.
Well, I think, again, if, uh, if you grow the keys.
That's it.
That's it.
Where's his site?
Uh, I'll give it to Patrick.
Okay.
And that's only padlocks?
No, there's...
Tumbler system?
There's everything, that's what I'm telling you, it's all, it's...
You have to be looking into it.
Everything's there, you might be able, you might be able to buy everything you need for...
Alright, right, so, right deal. So, what we need a motion to, you care into the key situation?
Motion to...
Give an estimate, and see what it's gonna cost us.
Yeah, motion to look into, I'll make a motion to, uh...
Now, Joe do it.
I'll do it.
I'll second the motion, you know.
All in favor?
All in.
All opposed?
And our last item.
How long is the auction last? That's last thing.
The twentieth, it's over.
So, we only gonna get an estimate?
We'll, we'll...
Can I authorize him to purchase and limit the amount?
He's gonna do it.
I agree.
I'm currently authorized up to a thousand, so, do we wanna put in, do we wanna get...
It won't be anywhere near that.
It won't be anywhere near that.
I don't know.
We don't know what this quote will be.
You said it end of January.
My, my only thing is...
Yeah, January.
Auction is generally...
I am totally all for fixing things in-house. I am, however, not a locksmith, I'm not here to learn how to be a locksmith. If I key the doors and make the...
No, but, but if you can buy your, even if you have, maybe I should keep my mouth shut.
No.
You've got twelve keys on your thing right now.
Yeah, if I have two...
Even if you, yeah, that's what I'm getting, if you can buy the locks off of his website, the padlock...
Yeah, then we only need the doors.
Then we only need the doors.
I just don't want the responsibility of keying the doors and then the place gets broken into. Guess who's at fault? Talking like...
We just, we just wanna know when there's a locksmith, uh, so...
So, so that's, that's all the...
So, what happened to you, you don't want to go that way?
I'll look into it, but I, I gotta look at the details, I don't know how it comes.
Well, what if we put somebody else in charge of that then, if you don't want them?
Like a locksmith?
Yeah.
Well, listen, even if you can buy the materials...
Even if you can buy the materials and get somebody to put them in.
That's what I'm saying.
But, but are you gonna know whether or not you have the right materials?
I don't.
That's right, that's why we made the...
Well, if I like it, we'll call special leave. Cause we'll have to do my turn.
I remember, you have every couple more things you have.
Okay, uh, gate repair and gate opener. The back of the plant, previously, uh, to go out to the discharge where the basin is, um, the gate was snipped and they just go through and get in it. That was before my, uh, I was there and the two previous were there. So...
We did cut the channeling fence.
Yeah, so we did install a gate that is probably four feet off the ground. But there's an opening, it's, it's not made to fit that gate, it's not totally proper, um, so...
You can crawl under it or over it.
You can crawl, you're gonna have a hard time crawling under it, but you can crawl over it, uh, easily. So, I think that needs to be looked into and for the heck of it, why not get a quote for an automatic gate opener? Cause otherwise, the gate is just open and anybody can come down and with concern of people coming down, who should the gate?
An authorized person.
Hit the button, open it, hit the button, close it.
You have enough room to roll, roll one sideways?
I think so. Yeah, I think so.
Be just a great town.
If it goes, if it goes towards the crack, it should.
Yeah.
But that's two gates, isn't it? The, the opening type is...
I'll make the motion, look into the cost of getting this gate repaired in the rear complex and the, the system.
I'll, I'll second that motion.
Make it, uh, really call it, frequency control, identity button.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm gonna add one bit on you. I suggested this a long time ago about security. Security cameras, security, whatever we have to do for around the plant. I still think we need to do that. So, I wanna make a motion. If there's a company out there, whatever, doesn't, you don't have to install, just this company can then give us a quote.
I can look, I can still look into it, I just, my recommendation is last time, we got what we paid for.
I'm not saying that, I, I'm not...
Yeah, so I...
I want...
Something...
The correct thing.
Yeah.
Up to par.
So, we can get quotes and we can...
It's not I.
I'll look up, yeah. I'll look up some cameras and...
I'll second your motion, Deb.
Get the ball, we'll get the ball rolling on it, I'll second it.
So, when'd you get the first one?
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
They were a brand called, they were a brand called Zosi off the name of it on, they're about two hundred fifty bucks, I think.
How many can?
Four.
Four.
Yeah, we're still, we're still gonna use them, we'll put them up at, uh, I think right now the plan is to put them up facing the tank in Burndale. Cause that's in the middle of the woods, nobody's ever up there, that's the first place that people might head, so...
I have sixteen with two rotators that you can control on your phone.
That's pretty cool, yeah.
Where'd you get yours then?
No, it was...
This is preliminary, we're just gonna check prices.
Yeah, anyway, I had about four hundred bucks.
I, I make the motion, so...
Yeah, I make the, I make, yeah, make the motion pass.
Yeah.
And reports, three hundred sixty in days, report double on it.
There's a, there's a place in Dowell's or something in, in Johnsonburg, I forget who owns it now, I think it's Old Dowell's. They do it, and I know, uh, Sinbeck does it too in St. Mary's. We can always check them to see how much they are, cause they're monitored by different things, we can check with them.
Oh, time you, what are they, like, radio frequency or?
You can check on it.
You can get a radio frequency, the ones I got were hardwired.
Hardwired.
Sometimes you can get like a TV screen and you can look at it or on your phone.
So, you get a cameras, DVR, and...
Well, you can have, you can have a fun radio to your, uh, PC, so, yeah, also.
There's different ones.
I'd get a TV, put it above the plant.
Yeah, so we need, we need a...
Three hundred sixty in four hundred dollars.
We need a, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll motion to adjourn.